Okay, we're reconvening Wycomico County Council Budget Work Session from May 11th, 2020. The next item on the agenda, and I should note ahead of time that we have, we do have a quorum of the council here. We have Councilman Holloway, Councilman Hastings, Councilman McCain, Vice President Cannon, and Councilwoman Nicole Ackley. And that's, now this is total, five total. Public Works is the next item on the agenda. I believe we have Mr. Whitelock here, is that correct?
Just give him a second to unmute.
Mm-hmm. Need to unmute if you're there.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
There you go.
There we go. How are you?
Mr. Whitelock, if you could just make sure that you're speaking into the audio on your end.
How about now, can you hear me?
Good, thank you.
Right. Mr. Whitelock, I understand you're in the building. If you'd like to join us in the council chambers, you're certainly welcome to do so. We have social distancing here. It's your, it's your, your choice.
We're there.
Council questions?
Mr. Whitelock? Mr. Whitelock?
Yes.
One thing I noticed is you're asking for an increase in the tipping fees.
Yeah.
And the permitting fee for landfill. Is there a reason for that? And I'll ask that first, I'll ask that question first, I guess.
It's for a $600,000 operating increase due to hauling activities from Conley Mill.
Do what now?
It's costing us an extra $600,000 a year to haul dirt from Conley Mill to the landfill.
From Conley Mill?
The donated property.
Uh-huh. So you're hauling dirt from there now?
Yes, well, we were, we pulled back that a little bit, we pulled back.
Uh-huh. Have you checked with any other counties to see what their tipping fees are? Are we in line with other, other folks, or?
Actually, we're one of the two lowest in the lower, lower region.
Uh-huh.
Everyone else family runs from 6250 up to, if you go up to Holloway, some counties.
It's what now? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So here, you can go anywhere from 6250 up to 80 hours a ton up in some counties.
Uh-huh. Any other questions, I might come back.
We've noticed on the, on the line items that you've budgeted for Chief Civil Engineer. Just curious as to what, what was behind that.
The thought was on that that we wanted to reintroduce that back in, and the extra engineer was, so what we tried to do is hold a pretty day with Frank Stein window or some more stuff, and that's, part of that is to help bring that in.
Okay. I guess a question related to that. Are you up to staff right now with, with your employees there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any concern, is there any concerns if you up the tipping fee that you could possibly lose some of the carters that would be bringing items to the landfill?
No.
There's no concerns on that? Okay.
No, we would be more in line with the county around this number.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, I believe we get out of county wasting county now because of...
The $600,000 for hauling the dirt from, from Conley Mill to the landfill, that couldn't have been absorbed in all, in your tipping fees that you already, in the money you already had? Or is that just an addition?
Well, generally, we try to roll it and roll it back into the bank account some three to $400,000 a year. Basically, if I kept running the way I am, I would be running the way.
Okay. All right. I see there's like a million dollar reduction in road spending. Is that going to have any effect on our paving program?
No, no. Generally, by the end of the paving period, we generally turn some money back into the general.
So we can take a million dollars out of our roads program and it's not going to have an effect on any of our paving? How, how, I don't understand how that works.
When we get that, we get, we get a lot of the money between fire chest, slurry seal, and paving. We distribute it out as we need, if we're going to do more paving, and we, you know, we cash our money that way, or some of the other. We're not doing as much of secondary stuff as we already are.
Mr. Jones?
Whitelock?
Yeah.
Hi, it's Nicole Ackley, how are you? Good. I know, you know Jody's questions, I just wanted to go over them again so that all the council members could hear and citizens could hear the response. The question that I asked you, have your funds been allocated to Barron Creek Road?
Barron Creek Road holds some $500,000 in funding right now. Just got the approval from DNR and Army 4 to put roads back in place.
Great.
The estimated cost of that project is going to be about $9.1 million.
So the county would need to come up with the other?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any, is there any plans for that?
We have to bring the county in because of the budget of all events and needed, and we have the approval.
I see, okay. And then the other one was the West Estail ditch reconstruction grant fund?
Yeah, there's a $1,000 in CIP this year for that work.
Okay. So that'll be done this year.
If you approve, I'll do that.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Whitelock, are you suggesting that the council should make a recommendation that the funds be allocated for Barron Creek?
That is what is needed, but I wouldn't want to speak freely, I could, I also, I mean, that will, that will be right around where I said to do the work.
And I guess, I'm assuming that you're anticipating that work will be done in this coming fiscal year?
Whatever time schedule can be, it's appropriate.
Was it something that you initially put in your budget that was cut from the executive's office?
No.
So you didn't, you didn't put it in your budget originally?
No, I, when I say we jumped out, we jumped out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, no, thank you.
All right, great. Thanks for, thanks for being here, we appreciate it. You have a good week.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the airport. How's everybody? Great. If you could do us a favor and just introduce yourselves. Mr. Kramer, I hate to say you have to share a mic over there, but if you could just let us know who you are and your role, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Matt Kramer, I'm Vice Chairman of the Airport Commission.
Calvin Peacock, Chair of the Airport Commission.
Tony Rudy, Assistant Airport Manager.
Great, thank you very much for being here, gentlemen, we appreciate it. Mr. Peacock, I want to thank you also for the forum on the waterline. Very well thought out. I know that was your, your personal initiative, and the council would like to thank you very much for, for taking that initiative. I thought it was very productive.
Thank you very much. I also like to thank the council for their participation in passing those two resolutions as well.
Great, glad to help you. I will let, Tony, I'll let you go first if you'd like to somewhat to maybe explain any new initiatives on your part. You can also touch on any of the, the anticipated funding that you, that you think might be coming down the line. A lot of what we're looking at, I guess, this year depends not only on what the, the county might decide to do, but also we do have to take into consideration what's, we're assuming is coming from the federal government as well, and how that'll impact us.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
And you have to get very close to your mic, gentlemen, because it's very muffled to the, yeah.
Okay, I guess I'd like to begin with, you know, we took a good look at this budget again, at the executive's request about a month and a half ago, and really tried to make it pretty flat to last year's budget. We do have some increased expenses, maintenance expenses that we've recognized, so we bumped those items up slightly. However, we did, we did reduce back other items as well, just to, to just try to stay with a flat budget. With that being said, with the CARES funding that has come out, the airport was awarded, or I should say, not awarded, but was slated to receive approximately $18 million. Under recommendations from the FAA, we are looking to use part of those funds, roughly $10 million of those funds towards operating expenses. We can go back up to January 20th of this year to get reimbursed for operating and maintenance expenses, and we've projected the number for the next few years, basically to cover, cover operating and maintenance expenses for the next three years with roughly a 4% increase year over year. And then the last year, we reduced that number to help fund projects that we're looking at getting funded. So we've got about roughly $8 million, as you'll see on those sheets, towards projects that we need for the airport, for capital projects.
And Tony, I believe, don't you have like five years to spend this? You don't have to spend all this in...
Four, excuse, four years from when the, when the grant is issued.
Four years from the grant.
Tony, I see on, let's see, revenue generating projects. Okay, that answers my question. Never mind. I seen the $150,000 for the auto parking attendant. Is that what you're expecting in revenue for '21?
That, well, that's an expense for equipment that, basically, we buy that equipment up front.
Pardon me?
We buy, we buy that equipment for roughly $150,000, and our parking concession is up next year, so that equipment would basically replace the concession operation at the airport, so...
So we buy that equipment?
We buy that, and it'll pay for itself in less than two years.
Now, does that mean we're going to be hiring people to run it, or are we going to sign another agreement with, with the parking management?
As far as I know, no, we're not. We will have to maintain that equipment, though, and I'm not familiar with, as far as that's something that we can do, or if we would have to contract the maintenance of that equipment out, but it's, it's, it's basically a license plate reader, from what I understand.
Okay.
So it should be very minimal maintenance.
I think I'm off on the wrong track. This isn't to do with the, with the Republic Parking Lot?
Yes, this, this equipment will basically replace that concession agreement, so we won't have people in a booth. It'll be an automated system.
Okay. All right. So you're going to do away with the booth and the people, and just put an auto tag reader?
Yes.
And that's how they'll be charged?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't know that was going to happen. Okay. All right.
Any other questions from anyone? I don't think I have a lot of questions here. Mr. Strasburg, how, how do you anticipate when this, these funds come in? How will that be handled? I, I believe it's, am I, am I, how will that be handled through the county?
I still have to get guidance from the, from the FAA, John. The, as I recall, Tony, are these reimbursable grants, or is this just straight grant funding that comes in?
From my understanding, the operations and maintenance expenses are reimbursable, so we would have to submit those requests to the FAA to get reimbursed. Similar, I believe it's similar to how we do for capital projects right now. For the, for the development projects, we don't have guidance yet as to, as to how that, how that's going to be funded, but again, we would have to apply for those projects be awarded a grant, and I'm assuming it would be a similar situation where, as, as we have payment requests into the FAA, we would get reimbursed at that point.
Okay. From an appropriation standpoint, John, I think that's your question.
Yeah.
It would still run through the same process, so the, so the appropriation would still come through council. So the projects, for instance, that we're proposing doing, would still have to be approved by council.
Okay. All right. The, thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm good. I forgot what I was going to ask. Sorry, go ahead. No, I was, I was going to say, I'm glad to see, you know, a lot of strong revenue numbers here, which is really good, and I'm glad to see that, and you know, if you look back on prior years, I think the airport's done an excellent job in, in making, in seeing growth over the last couple of years, anyway. So that's, that's an excellent thing.
The, we've had two vendors come forward wanting concessions. Do you anticipate any more? Any other revenue generating streams out there that they're going to come forward and want concessions on?
No, I haven't heard of any to this point.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments that you would, either of you gentlemen would like to make? Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Mrs. Harley, what do we have as far as the...
So our next one is not scheduled until 12:30.
12:30, so we're, we're going to be taking a recess, then?
Yes.
That one already happened, didn't it, Public Works?
No, the last one is Fire Department.
Right, and they did get rescheduled to 12:30.
Okay.
Sorry.
If you can move them up any closer, can you, can you call them back?
I can try, yes.
See if we can't get them in here, 12 o'clock at the latest.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I can try to call them. They both work, I think, on the road, so I will try, I will definitely try to call him. There's two people or names, so I'll let you guys know, they can come early.
Thank you, then.
Thanks, Lynn.
What is that phone number they call in on?
Um...
Is it one?
It's, it's written on your agenda.
Okay, we're now, we'll go into recess, what's our, well, 45 minutes at the, at the, at the least.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're reconvening for the May 11th, 2020 Wycomico County Work Session. The final item on the agenda is with the, with the volunteer fire and ambulance, and I know we have two gentlemen here, I think it's Chief Billy White and John Hilton, am I correct?
Fire Department.
Great, gentlemen, thanks for, thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
We haven't had the opportunity to talk much with you about any of this. We noticed there are increases, I think the majority of council is, is, is okay with that. I thank you guys for what the volunteers do for us countywide. I know I've always said we can't pay enough. Not all taxpayers might say that, but we're really grateful for everything you do for Wycomico County. We thought we'd just ask you, just as, as an overview, since we haven't had the opportunity to conversation, what you saw as your needs this year, and, and the reasons as far as, the reasons that we, we needed to make, consider higher, more payments. And whoever wants to, whoever wants to step in, feel free.
John, I'm going to go.
You can do it first, Billy.
That's fine, thank you. Again, thank you all for having, making the opportunity to speak with us. We asked for these increases, as most of you are aware, and I believe you just said that yourself, you know, what we do costs a significant amount of money every year, and we appreciate the support we've gotten from you in the past, and look forward to the support we'll get from you in the future. But the cost of equipment, the maintenance and so forth of the equipment, protective equipment, has increased significantly over the past year. I've been involved in the fire services for over 30 years now, and have seen the increases, and it's just continually going up. The paramedic salary, as John will probably tell you, and as most of you are aware, we're competing with not just a Wycomico County personnel, it's an eastern shore and a state of Alabama. Several of our paramedics not only work in Sharp Town or Wycomico County, they're also across the bridge, in other counties as well, and we're competing trying to maintain and keep those folks here with us, and the demand for the paramedics is a lot higher than what the supply makes it. And, you know, we have good paramedics that work for us in the county, but trying to retain them is getting harder and harder. So that's why we asked for the increase, due to the, the cost of doing business, and also, as I said, for the, to try to keep the paramedics here with us. And that's all, John.
Just, you know, like Billy was saying about the cost of the increases, Pal, but we just had you purchase the new breathing apparatus this year. Just to replace, not to increase the amount of units we have, just to replace what we have, it costs $100,000.
Could you repeat that? You were breaking...
And they're only good for 20 years.
Could you repeat that? Because you were breaking, you were, you were breaking up. If you could repeat that, thank you.
Sorry, the, the new air packs cost $189,000, and they're only good for 15 to 20 years, and they're going to go up again when it's time to replace them next time. And that was just to get what we have, not to buy any extra packs to have on hand, it was just what we needed on the trucks. And as Chief White was saying about the paramedics, we're competing greatly with across the bridge for pay. They're paying more, so our paramedics are leaving the shore, working a 24-hour shift across the bridge for more money. We can't, with, with, what we do in fundraisers, which has drastically decreased over the years, because nobody wants to support the fire services no more. Our fundraisers aren't there like they used to be, and that's part of the reason we're asking for a little more help from the county to keep the trucks running and providing the services the community like they deserve.
Understood.
Thank you.
Joe?
If I may say something else, well, this is Billy White again. The cost for the paramedic, it was brought to our attention by several departments in the county. Their, I mean, the average contribution across the county, minimalized, was about $50,000 a year to offset the funding that we get from the county and our, that's billing, to pay salaries. There are some companies in the county, for their ALS, or their EMS, I should say, is paying upwards of $250,000 to $300,000 out of their own to help keep this up and operating to a level that we're just providing services. And I believe when we met with you folks last year, the conversation was, this is just a fantasy. You know, there needs to be something looked into, and we've done some work on our own to try to figure out ways to make this a more permanent situation as far as the EMS goes in the county. But it's going to be a significant cost to the taxpayer if that, those avenues are pursued in the future. And as far as fire equipment goes, as John said, one of the neighboring companies over here on the west side, they just bought new breathing apparatus to meet the current standard, and it was a one-for-one, they didn't buy any extras, and their cost was over $325,000. And that's just one example. We had to replace 10 sets of turnout gear this year, because we have more rotation, and those 10 sets of turnout gear cost $50,000. So, I mean, those are just some examples of some of the things that are going on, I know you, but I just wanted to, you know, enlighten you again on the fact that we're out here trying to have fundraisers and to offset what we do get from the county. I just was with John, trying to get some information. Fire companies to date, so far, have lost fundraising because of the virus over a half million dollars. We turned that information into the State Bonuses Association, we've also talked to the county executives, there's two something there. But we've lost over half a million dollars since March the 1st through fundraising, for fundraising. One of the biggest ones hit so far has been Heverne with that, because they've had to cancel that carnival, and Sharp Town, we're not sure what we're going to do yet, we're still, you know, wait and see.
Why is it that Heverne didn't even, they didn't even do their casino night this year? This, you know, they, they normally do that. Heverne usually does their casino night, I've been going to that for the last six, 16 years or so, every year, and they usually have it Sunday, a Super Bowl Sunday, and I know that was pushed off, and a couple others were, too. Curious on a side note, just why some of that fundraising was not happening, or why those events weren't happening, but...
I can't answer that question, why they didn't have it, someone else might be able to speak to it.
Just curious.
Joe?
Mr. White? Mr. White?
Yes.
This is Nicole Ackley, how are you?
I'm, I'm, how are you doing?
I'm good, I know he's, I know he's a little bit about this, but I'm just, I'm just wondering what the, what the billing residual is on your paramedics, because with the expensive paramedics, the reimbursement has also gone up drastically, and so I'm wondering if the world healthcare offset, if all fire departments, and I looked at the county, like, all through the county, with, with the fire department, with corrections, with, there was one other one, I was looking at, they would combine their billing services, make a consortium, and they, and nursing homes, they could increase their reimbursement.
They could, but, but, I mean, you're still only going to get a certain percentage of the billing. How you saw it down in the sample, I believe last year we ran 200, I believe, ambulance calls, and you're still only going to get a percentage of what you bill. We don't do collections, that was something we decided when we went to the building, that we were not going to do collections, because of the rural area and the, the income of the folks in the area, I don't want to, you know, say anything, but that's why we opted not to go with a collection-based billing system. Now, I don't know what other departments do, but I know, you know, of course, all of those, those downbar and parcs are approved, their, their billing is probably going to be significantly more than what ours is, of course, because they run more cars. But I, I don't know if it's all going together, I mean, might be something to look at in the future, it might help, but...
Would, would you mind, do you have a, do you have a, got a billing printed out of what you, and then what you, what your return is?
I can get that, yes, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Would you, would you mind getting that for me? I just want to take a look at it and see what it's like compared to even like the nursing home, if they're getting what they built.
Okay. Yeah, we can look into it. And of course, there's some of them that we, no matter, you know, the billing is preset what we're going to get from, and I, don't quote me on this, I think it's only $100 or $110, no matter what.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's already predetermined. And of course, there's also, from my understanding, that there's talks of that possibly changing, where we'll get actually less because of, or for that.
Okay. Okay.
But I'll, I'll be more than happy...
But I'll be more than happy to get you a copy of that.
I mean, is that something you'd be interested in? I just, I just see that overall with the county, something that we could bring together as more bargaining power for a higher reimbursement rate.
I, I can't say. If you'll put me together some information between the county association and the chief's association, we'll be more than happy to discuss it with them, to see what the fire companies may want to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe?
Thank you.
How y'all doing today?
Yes.
I'm good, sir.
Good, good. My question was going to be, what effects has the COVID-19 situation had on the fundraising, but I see you've kind of already addressed that. So I guess I don't have that question anymore. But you said you think they've lost about a half a million dollars in fundraising monies already? Is there any outlook on about what that will total out to by the end of the year, or say, the end of the summer?
Based on the information we've gotten, gotten so far from all the fire companies, we're right at $563,000 as of right now, and that runs through July 1st, based on the way things are right now. If it continues on through the end of the summer, we're looking, we're looking at maybe September the 1st or October the 1st. We're projecting that'll probably double, based on the fact of Sharp Town, if we lose our carnival, Pittsville, Bingo's, I know Powell's got some other, all the fire companies have some other events that are potentially going to be canceled if we continue on the way we are with the shutdown. So we're looking at probably over a million dollars, if not more.
Yeah, yeah. That's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big hit. It really is. It really is. I don't have any other question. I don't, I don't have any other question. I don't have any other...
Right while you're talking about the fun, I've lost in the end. Right while you're talking about the fundraising, something else that was brought to our attention when we were making these phone calls about the fundraising, all the fire companies have stated that their EMS billing, their EMS calls are down, and that they've seen a significant decrease in their EMS billing because of that.
Be seeing a decrease in, you should be seeing a decrease in that probably, and traffic accident calls also, because people aren't driving as much. Is that, has that come across your desk? Have you paid attention to that?
Yeah, calls as a general, fire and EMS calls, from all the chiefs that I've spoken to, all of them, have decreased, except for probably the city, I would say. But I know the county departments, they've all decreased, and the biggest thing, when I was talking to them last week, was, like I said, not only the fundraising, but the EMS billing, where it's all significantly across the county.
Departments had to purchase any special equipment for this COVID-19 situation, or did you probably have all that already?
No, we had, we had some to start with. A lot of it was left over from the Bolivar situation a few years ago. But most of the departments I've spoke to had spent, on the, on the average, now some have spent more, the busier departments around the corner, but on the average, they've spent at least $1,000 so far. The chief's association and the county association have gone together with the funds that we have, and we have purchased some additional gowns, and we're looking at, we're trying to find masks, and John and the county association are working on face shields and so forth. And we are also in the process of trying to get a grant. I got a meeting later on this afternoon in regards to filling out some grant information, so we can, the county departments can attempt to get a grant. What we've gotten through the state as far as PPE has been, and I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but it's a bad habit I have, but it's been very insignificant. We've been out trying to work together to find PPE, and like I said, on the average, to answer your question, we've spent at least $1,000, if not more.
And the worst part about it, the PPE we're getting is disposable. There's, we're not, we're just, it, it, one time and done, for the majority of it. So we're spending that much, we're constantly having to buy more.
Do you think, do you think that you're going to have any luck with representation on the state or even the federal level to try to, to see if you can't acquire some type of funding similar to like, you know, from the CARES Act?
We've been told the, I talked to Mr. Strasburg last week or the week before in regards to that, and he was looking into it, and they were trying to get some guidance from the state in regards to the CARES Act. I know other counties around us have been able to get some funding or reimbursement from the CARES Act in regards to PPE and other things they've had to do special because of this.
Right, and this wouldn't even be really for a PPE. This would just be from, you know, lost revenue due to the fact that, as you suggested, some of your volunteer fundraisers have had to be canceled, I would hope. In that perspective, possibly?
Yes, as well. That was one of the other things we spoke to, Mr. Strasburg. It's trying to get some additional funding from the CARES Act to help all such things.
I must say, I think he's, he's very much on top of it. I know he's been communicating with the governor's office on a weekly basis. So, I mean, it is in good hands. Let's see, you know, see how, how it plays out from here. Any other questions from anyone?
Yeah, I'm good, and thank you all for what you do, and tell your ladies' auxiliaries thank you. I know here on the east side that they're all working hard, and I'm sure you guys and girls are, too, on the west side.
Yeah, we are. We're, we're working together. It's nice to see. We're trying to get through this together, so...
We appreciate you taking the time to, to call in.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right.
The support you give will be greatly, greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Have a good...
It would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. We appreciate everything you do. Have a good week.
Thank you.
You, too.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Meetings adjourned.